All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening and welcome, everyone. First order of business is a roll call, please, Tom.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Fisher.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Osma.
Present.
Elly.
Present.
Laschusa. We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Thomas. Item number one is a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is a motion approving our minutes from February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under item number three, recognitions and awards, we have a letter of commendation for Officer Damian Schroeder. McKeeck. Good things are going on.
Good things are going on. Yeah, we do like to point out when we have employees do extraordinary work. Anything you got hit up here, Stephen, or?
Everybody replay it?
Yep. So I'll kind of just do a voice narrative over this. This is one of our squad car videos. On February fourth, Damian was dispatched to a house fire. It was a duplex. He is our first arriving officer. When he arrives, just to the right, you can see the flames coming from the window. There's a gentleman lying there. Damian will run up. The man has a broken leg. He cannot move on his own. You'll notice Damian drag him from there. You'll see debris and other items start to fall where that man was positioned. That would have fallen on him. You can see the ground will start to burn. Damian brings him to safety. Our bystander there, we would later learn, is the suspect charged in this particular fire, therefore why no aid was given. But again, if you just watch where the man was at, you can clearly see, had Damian not arrived when he had, those seconds matter, that that man would have likely certainly been burned. If you know anything about burns, probably fatally as he as he laid there because no other help other than Damian was coming. Damian kept on the move. He was giving good radio traffic at this time, alerting other responding units to what was occurring, what he was doing. He's off frame right now. This is a duplex, and he's working on getting those other folks out of their side of the duplex. And you'll see him run up here with some of those documents, carrying a young child to safety as well. There he comes, there he goes. And so like I said, it was just, I was in my office when this came out. It was during the day shift. I could just hear, you know, the dedication in his voice, although he was, of course, had a lot of adrenaline. He was doing exactly what we wanted him to do, rendering aid, getting people to safety, letting responding units know that people were safe, people were out of the house. But again, you look back at the house, you look at that, where that where that gentleman was, this certainly could have had a could have had a fatal outcome here, and solely due to Damian's actions, I think that that gentleman survived. So we do want to give him a letter of commendation in front of council to recognize his incredible actions on that day. So Damian. He's elected not to give a speech, so.
Well, there's no doubt, Damian, that you saved that man's life. There's no doubt about it. Your actions that day are incredibly heroic, and I appreciate the service. It's great to see all the officers supporting you. I know every day, every day you guys put your lives on the line and do what you do. So this is just clear video of what you've done to really save a man's life. So appreciate appreciate you and appreciate all the department and all the leadership that that you guys have and what you do every day. So thank you, and I'd sure love to, if you'd came, come through and shake everybody's hand if you could, please. Excellent work. Thank you. Yeah, it was within seconds of you dragging that man across the street that flames would have been on top of him, so. Well done. Well earned accommodation. Moving on to, under recognitions and award, we have a retirement. Herb Weiner also, from the Street Department. Gosh, what is twenty-five years. Stephen, what do you got?
Herb was not able to make it tonight, but we still wanted to recognize him and make sure that he gets a black, a plaque for his years of service. But Herb was working for us in the Street Department for over twenty-four years as in a variety of jobs, as a street maintenance personnel, but most recently, probably about the last half of his career as a as equipment operator. So Herb would be out on the front lines with snow removal, plowing, and operating equipment during those sorts of events, as well as he was our our lead paver operator and also our chipper. So big void to fill for us coming up this summer with all of our paving and street maintenance jobs. And we appreciate all the work that Herb had given to us over the course of his career. So I just wanted to thank Herb for his years of service.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. I know you're not here, but we do appreciate the years of service. Twenty-five years is a good pulp, there's no doubt. And it's great to see that kind of longevity in the city of Austin, and certainly appreciate his service as well. Thank you. And he'll be getting a plaque mailed to him or brought to him. That's excellent. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, looking for a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under bid opening and award, we have item number five is a resolution receiving bids for asphalt emulsion. Stephen.
Part of our street maintenance program involves adding a chip seal to our.
Thank you, folks, for coming. Thank you.
To our roadways to extend the maintenance or the lifespan of the existing pavement surface. So before you tonight is the oil part of that chip sealing process. Henry G. Miggs was our only bidder. They have been our only bidder for a number of years. You can see here some of the historical prices. Those really vary based on the quantity of oil that we plan to put down throughout the course of the year. This year, we're ramping up our program a little bit, and as such, it reflects a little higher price for overall cost. We have a hundred thousand dollar budget, and we'd recommend awarding to Henry G. Miggs for this work.
Excellent. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Lang? Otherwise, looking for a resolution awarding the bid?
So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Elly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number six is receiving bids for bituminous material, and I do have to note that last meeting when when Andy said bit, I didn't know we could abbreviate. You'd be struggling with that bituminous all these years. I could have just been saying bit. So Stephen.
Yes. So with that, this is part of our, again, our street maintenance. Our our street crews do patching and pavement maintenance throughout the course of the summer to try to extend the longevity of the asphalt pavement. For that, we 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 draw, we transport all of the asphalt mix here to the city. We pave it ourselves, but this is to actually purchase the product. So Yulin Brothers was the low bidder in the amount of nine hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. We factor in a mileage component to that as well because it takes us time to drive to a farther distance. In this case, Yulin Brothers happens to be the closer of the two asphalt plants. So we estimate, you know, a total project of three, total material cost of three hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. We will, that's based on four thousand five hundred tons of asphalt. We will adjust that tonnage quantity to fit within our budget. But again, you can see here below some historical prices, mainly breaking it down by the ton here based on how the the tonnage prices of of what we call FOB, FOB asphalt has increased over the years. But with that, we would recommend awarding this bid to Yulin Brothers.
Excellent. Thank you, Stephen. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Lang, item number six. If not, looking for resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Elly.
Aye.
Laschusa, I'm sorry. Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number seven is, under public hearing, we have a public public hearing on street improvements on Oakland Avenue, First Street Northeast to Twelfth Street Northwest, and First Avenue Southwest, South Main Street to Twelfth Street Southwest, Project twenty-five, one oh three. Stephen.
Yes, so this is why I have the computer set up here for this presentation and the next one regarding our our public hearing on improvements for, in this case, as you mentioned, Oakland Avenue West, First Avenue Southwest. It's a street and utility reconstruction project. We've had multiple meetings on this. We've had a lot of early on, a couple of years ago, we started gathering public input with surveys. Then as we honed in on the project's scope and the design through the feedback that we received, we had additional public meetings. I think our last, we've probably had five to six public meetings on this project, which is trying to get the message out. We understand that this is a big project for our community. Most recently, we had a public meeting back in December and another meeting last week. We presented the same information to a different group, and generally, we've, I don't we've had a low turnout at our public meetings, unfortunately. And this is a big project. It impacts a lot of different people. We've tried to reach out in multiple different forms. I think our our meeting back in December, we had maybe ten properties represented. And our meeting last week, so a hundred and seventy properties overall on this project, so only only ten represented back in September, and now our meeting last week, we had four properties represented. Three of them came back in December as well. So we've got some people that are really getting informed, and and then we have a larger group that is, you know, hopefully they're getting their information in other ways for this project. But with that, wanted to present this at this time for the public hearing. As you described, the roadway segments, Oakland Avenue was last reconstructed in nineteen seventy-nine, and First Avenue Southwest was last reconstructed in nineteen fifty-three. So we've really got our bang for our buck there on on First Avenue Southwest. A lot of question comes as to how are we going to phase this project? It's a very, it's a twenty-five block project. We can't do it all in one year. So what we're looking at doing is constructing Oakland Avenue, a portion of Oakland Avenue first in twenty twenty-five. We would start at the fire station and work west, just past Seventh Street, near Holverston's office, somewhere there about mid-block between Seventh Street and Eighth Street. We would, we would end in twenty twenty-five. Then we would begin again in twenty twenty-six, finishing off the remainder of Oakland Avenue from where we ended that first phase there, again, by Holverston's office and carrying it down to Twelfth Street by quick trip. We would also jump around and do a four-block section of First Avenue, the easterly end of First Avenue, from about Papa Murphy's to Main Street. So that's kind of, and then finally, in twenty twenty-seven, we'd do the the remaining portion of First Avenue from Fourth Street back to Twelfth Street Southwest. So that's kind of our three-year phasing of this project. Again, three-year project. It's complete reconstruction roadway, underground utilities, place back eight-inch concrete pavement, our standard aggregate base and subdrain, subgrade materials. There'll be, concrete sidewalks will be replaced on the project, as well as concrete driveways. There'll be signal light modifications, decorative signal lighting along the corridor, and a couple RRFBs or rapid flashing beacons that pedestrians can trigger to cross both roadways more safely. Boulevards and bump outs will be restored with a combination of items, could be grass, trees, landscaping and benches. And then the underground utility replacement will include a complete storm sewer replacement, complete sanitary, complete well, Austin Utilities is looking at complete replacement of water main, gas main, they already started gas main last fall, and then also looking to underground electrical wherever possible. In addition to all of that, we have private telecommunications companies like Charter, Lumen, Metronet and Arvig, and we're coordinating with all of those on conflicts and relocations that are necessary as part of the overall project as well. This, now getting in a little bit to a portion of items we've we've reviewed with council and and the public before, but we're proposing an eight-foot sidewalk on the north side of Oakland and the south side of First Avenue. We'll continue, we're proposing to convert the two-way to a one-way conversion of Oakland Avenue from Main Street between Main Street and First Street Northeast. That's by the, from the fire station to Firestone. We have some island modifications at First Avenue Southwest and Twelfth Street Southwest. We're looking at bump outs on both avenues at Main Street, Fourth Street and and Eighth Street to help with pedestrian crossings. Driveway modifications wherever possible, trying to limit the number of driveways, and then also some improvements for landscaping on this corridor. Again, this is something, believe we've all seen before. It's the design of the new roadway with two lanes of traffic in in the westerly direction on Oakland and two lanes of traffic in the easterly direction on First Avenue. Parking on both sides, just as it currently is. Those those driving lanes and parking lanes are narrowing up just slightly. And then the eight-foot sidewalk that I mentioned, five-foot sidewalk on the other side, and then a very similar boulevard width of five feet to what we currently have. Extensive utility replacement as shown in this figure. This is what the one-way conversion will look like by the fire station, as I mentioned previously, as you come in from East Side Lake and you're heading westbound on Oakland Avenue. This block is the, everything is is two lanes of traffic in the westerly direction from East Side Lake to to Highway one oh five, except for this one block. And it does create some traffic backups during our five o'clock time period, so we would recommend this one-way conversion, and this is how traffic would be adjusted over to match up for westbound, west of Main Street. There'd be a bit of a curve through this section for westbound traffic. In addition to that, we looked at how can we improve the free right or the the traffic movement at the First Street intersection? So as as traffic from First Avenue is coming east, turning near the post office, coming north on First Street, they'll be able to make a free right movement and continue eastbound on Oakland Avenue, really trying to keep that traffic moving and flowing smoothly. We looked at our intersections to determine the the need and necessity of all our signal lights, how how to make improvements to those. And with that, we found and would recommend elimination of signal lights on Oakland Avenue at First Street Northwest and First Street Northeast. Here at First Avenue Southwest and Twelfth Street, we're proposing, right now, traffic from Highway one oh five and Twelfth Street to the south of town comes north. They turn on this little dogleg roadway of First Avenue right by Sterling Beauty Salon, and there's two lanes of traffic that could merge out onto First Avenue heading eastbound. That becomes a bit confusing at times. There are times the the vehicle on the left-hand side or the the left-hand side will actually merge into the right-hand lane as they as they continue east. We have a lot of vehicles that will tend to turn and go directly north on Eleventh Street in this location. So to try and and clean up the traffic movements and patterns, we're proposing to narrow this down to one merge lane from this little dogleg out onto First Avenue in the eastbound direction. By doing this, we'll be able to make a larger island in this area. We'll also be able to pull the stop signs and everything closer to the intersection to allow better visibility of of vehicles in all directions. I mentioned pedestrian bump outs on both avenues at Main Street, Fourth Street, both of those are signalized intersections. And then at Eighth Street as well, both both on First Avenue and Oakland Avenue. At Eighth Street, on the west side of Eighth Street, we'd propose to put these rapid flashing beacons. We have about ten of them around town right now. They seem to be a very good type of signage and flasher that notifies vehicles when pedestrians are there. They're not flashing all the time. They're they're pedestrian activated, and they seem to to grab the attention of motor vehicles, the best of what we've found to date. Mentioned driveway modifications. Last summer, we worked with different businesses to try to streamline and minimize the number of driveways going to different properties. Here's an example with Godfather's Pizza. Their existing location there, they have six driveways, and after working with them, we've been able to narrow that down to three, pulling some of those driveways away from the intersections, which is always something we look at from a traffic management standpoint. And then also, this allows them to better utilize their parking lot better. By eliminating all these driveways, they're able to add additional parking spaces. Also, we've talked previously about landscaping, and this is our opportunity to beautify this area. You've seen with how long nineteen fifty-three was the last time First Avenue was reconstructed in nineteen seventy-nine for Oakland Avenue. So our goal is to not be back here for another fifty years or more, and we want to work to make some improvements now that show folks as they're entering our community that that they're somewhere, they're they're somewhere different. You're not just driving through a residential area. There's different things in this area. We have some down here in the lower corner. This would be the plan for Main Street as as a bit of an expansion of landscaping in that area with bench. Also, the arts community has requested saving a space here for a future art sculpture or something of that nature, and we'll we'll save a space for that to be determined at a later date. But just trying to incorporate all those different factors to make this a one-time project. As we look at project funding, our our estimate for the project is fifteen point six million dollars, and we have different funding sources allocated for this project with state and federal grants, municipal state aid dollars, sanitary sewer fund and assessments. We have sent out assessment notices to all the adjacent property owners, and those assessments amount to a little over one million dollars for this fifteen point six million dollar project. So earlier this year, we set assessment rates for residential properties at sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents per front foot, commercial properties at ninety-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents per front foot. For this project, there is no assessment for sidewalk. All all property owners will be assessed based on this twenty twenty-five rate. Even if their phase of work is is planned for twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven, they will, we will hold this rate for them for for their particular phase. We have repayment options, and as we always do, these repayment timelines go again along with the phase that they are in. So if they are in the twenty twenty-five phase of construction, they will have until October thirty-first of twenty twenty-five to pay their assessment without interest. They could pay fifty percent of it. The remainder would go on their taxes. When it goes on their taxes, it's spread out over fifteen years at five point seven five percent interest. If they choose to do nothing, the hundred percent of it would go on their taxes, spread, again, spread out over fifteen years with interest. So likewise, if they are in the twenty twenty-six phase of construction, they would have until October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And again, if they're in twenty twenty-seven phase, they would have until October thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven. All using the same rates as the twenty twenty-five people, they've all received their notices with their dollar amounts for the project. Here is, again, just a little bit more in-depth view of the phasing. For twenty twenty-five, the area in red is where we will start the work. That is from First Street Northeast to just short of Fourth Street Northwest. We'll focus there in the early summer, hopefully May and June. And then the month of July, we will tear out the Fourth Street intersection with a goal to have that replaced in about a month, recognizing the time, trying to get that done between school and open back up before school starts. And then after that, we'll go back to finish work in the red area while also jumping forward into the green area west of Fourth Street and working west of Fourth Street toward just past Seventh Street. So that's the general layout. The start dates are all dependent upon our state plan review process. Our our plans have been over at the state since July, January seventeenth. We're hoping to hear back from them soon to make any modifications necessary, get those approvals and plans signed so we can start the bidding process in hopes of that kind of May timeline. But if if things get pushed back, so we anticipate about a five-month construction period for each phase of work. So if we're not able to start in May and it gets pushed back until June, then the completion would likely get pushed back from September into October and accordingly. So it's just depending on when we can get started. This would be our best case scenario. Likewise, in twenty twenty-six, we're expecting about five-month construction window, again, starting out to complete Oakland Avenue, and then midway through the summer, jumping over to work on First Avenue Southwest. And lastly, in twenty twenty-seven, we would be working on the last eight blocks of construction, leaving the Fourth Street intersection in place until July, where we would then tear it out and try to get it completed within that one-month period of July, maybe extending slightly into August, but making sure we've got it back open for the start of the school year. So that intersection is a key intersection for us to get done in and around school, and also the Main Street intersection. We're working with the the parade route on on how best to accommodate that, and we plan to continue the parade route on Main Street this year and make accommodations for them to get across Oakland Avenue this year and First Avenue in twenty twenty-six during construction. So that is my presentation. We have handouts, if anybody in the audience would like handouts. Those handouts, again, were all sent to homeowners with their assessment notices and their notice of this meeting. We have, we've started a couple of years ago with texting notices out to property owners, and this is a, this is a link where they can sign up for those text alerts. And we'll continue to work through this process and get as much information out there to the public as possible. With that, I turn it over to counsel, if you have any questions about this project.
Very good. Thank you, Stephen, for the PowerPoint presentation. Certainly going to be a transformational project. I know it's going to be some heartache as far as transport transportation and reroutes, but overall, you get seventy-five years out of a road and fifty-plus on the other one. There comes a day, and I think these will be well designed, and I appreciate all the work that's gone in so far, and I look forward to the transformation of that road. And it's going to be beautiful with the landscaping, the lighting and certain, and all the underneath, I won't even be able to see. So counsel, any questions or comments? Mr. Lang for opening up the public.
Stephen, two, one. The Chamber of Commerce very much thanks you for working with them on the Fourth of July Parade. I know that was causing some heartburn and it's a big deal, so I'm sure some some extra efforts are going to go into making that happen, and they very much appreciate it. The other thing, this is a question. I was just kind of curious as to the reasoning for the second phase. We're doing the west side of one end and then the east side of the other versus just kind of having them by each other. I'm sure there's a reason. I was curious what it was.
We didn't want to have both one-ways parallel to each other closed at the same time. That would have pushed one hundred percent of the traffic somewhere else. So that's why we alternated them in location to try to keep as much of First Avenue flowing past the construction zone of Oakland before we started the construction zone of First Avenue. So that was the reason for alternating them.
Makes sense.
Anyone else? Laura?
I think I know the answer to this question, but I will ask it anyway. I have heard from the public traffic on Oakland and First drives too fast already, and by narrowing the roadway, aren't we going to make that problem worse? Can you address that?
Yeah, studies have found that narrowing the roadway actually slows traffic down. The more open visibility that a driver has, the more comfortable they feel to drive faster. So by by narrowing things down, crowding it down just slightly, keeping the parked cars on both sides, that slows vehicles down. So we anticipate that this design, and based on studies that have been done, this actually should have a positive impact to slow down traffic. Also, the bump outs at the intersections is another method to slow traffic down. People see different things happening in the roadway, and that will tend to slow them down from their normal driving habits.
Thank you. I guess my other question is, I see there's quite a bit of detour route going right there on Second Avenue. on Second Avenue. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but I bought a house on Seventh Avenue in Northwest and then there was a street project and then I bought a house on Eighth Street Northwest and there was a street project and now I have moved to Second Avenue and I'm going to have three years of rerouted traffic right by my house, Stephen? This really isn't personal, right?
It is, it's all part of the plan.
Or do you just look at the five-year CIP and go, yes, we want that neighborhood?
How can I affect the most pain in my personal life?
All coming together. But, you know, that was a struggle looking at detour route. You know, if you go north of Oakland Avenue with the high school creates a big barrier for east-west traffic. Second Avenue was really our, our best option for a detour route. As we all know, locals know the system. They'll go where they feel comfortable, but we want to make sure that we want to have a designated detour route and Second Avenue just unfortunately in this, in your case, was our best, best option.
Maybe I can talk the kid into a lemonade stand.
There you go. Great revenue generator.
Most of the traffic.
Hey, Stephen, question for you, looking at the project funding, I mean, the majority of this is coming from federal, state grants and, you know, state aid. There's obviously been a lot of, you know, uncertainty, especially on the federal level the last, you know, couple of months. Do we still feel really good about getting those dollars or?
Yes, as good as we can. Yep. I, last Friday, I had a discussion with folks at our state aid office and they indicated that these dollar amounts for the, the seven point six eight million dollars for the state and federal grants are approved for our project.
Good question though, right on. What about the timing of the federal review? Do we see that being slowed down to a similar point that Baskin made?
Right now, with the dollars being approved for our project, our project does not have to go actually to Washington DC for review. If we were to, for some reason, get additional grant dollars or something and change that seven point six eight million, it would then have to go to DC for another time of review. So, we don't plan to change that amount. Though it'd be nice to get more grant dollars, but that time review would be a killer for our project. So, right now, we've had, we've been in conversations with them the last couple of weeks, asking status, trying to, trying to poke but not be overly, you know, aggressive with it and but, so I hope that it will, the review will come back here in the next week or so.
And then Stephen, last question from my standpoint, I know we've talked about this in the past, but we've got, you know, a broader audience. Can you talk a little bit about kind of the timing of why this year? Because obviously, you know, we've got bridges out, we've got like, why are we starting in twenty twenty-five versus waiting a few years?
Sure. So, five years ago, twenty twenty, I would say, we applied for a federal grant for the Oakland Avenue portion of this project and we were successful in getting a two point zero six million dollar grant and that's really what started our thought process for this project. At that time, we didn't know the timeline for the bridges or other wastewater treatment plant work, things like that. And when we get a federal grant, there is a, a set time period for when you have to encumber those funds. We need to bid and, and encumber the funds here in twenty twenty-five for that original twenty twenty grant that we received. We were successful in getting other grants for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-eight. Those we will advance construct or advance those dollars and use them ahead of time, but it's really that grant that we received back in twenty twenty that really set the schedule for this. We, if we could choose, we would do it differently, but our project, because of those federal dollars, requires us to bid it in this timeline and the state was on the same requirements with their dollars that they received for the bridges that set them on this timeline as well. And unfortunately, we didn't know that five, six years ago when we were starting to plan for it.
But it's seven point seven we don't have to pay for out of our local taxpayers, so there's a benefit to it.
Anybody else comment? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody here from the audience wishing to speak on item number seven? All right, then we'll look for a resolution for item number seven.
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Continuing with our public hearing, we have item number eight, which is a resolution on a public hearing for street improvements on Nature's Ridge Fourth Edition, Fourteenth Avenue Northeast, Eighteenth Street Northeast and Nineteenth Street Northeast, Project Twenty-Five Three-O-Three. Stephen?
This project will include the construction of about eighteen hundred feet of roadway to complete and which will make buildable about thirty residential lots to finish out the Nature's Ridge subdivision. Included with a project like this is site grading for all of those lots and roadway, and then full utility construction of sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water main, Austin Utilities with their three main utilities of water main, gas, and electric. Roadway construction, this, this roadway will be constructed with our typical roadway section using asphalt pavement, curb and gutter, aggregate base. There'll be sidewalk on one side of the street and there will be street lighting. And then finally, after we are done with the project, we'll, we'll cede and restore all of the disturbed areas. Our, this project is planned to go out for bids here in March if approved tonight and with a goal of early construction beginning in May and carrying through August. We've determined estimated costs for the project for the street improvements, the storm sewer, the sanitary sewer, Austin Utilities Water, Gas, and Electric, and city staff expenses at a total of one million, seven hundred and ten thousand dollars. These costs, our intent is to have the final assessment hearing in the fall after the construction is completed. We would then refine that dollar total to whatever the final construction amounts were. We would then send out final assessments to the, that would go to these thirty developed parcels and one hundred percent of the cost would be assessed back to these thirty properties. Right now, at one million, seven hundred and ten thousand dollars, we're estimating that to be fifty-seven thousand dollars per lot for the utility and infrastructure. They, those lots will have, and the owner of those lots will have until October thirty-first of twenty twenty-five to pay full amount without interest or pay at least fifty percent. The remainder would go on their taxes, spread out over fifteen years at an interest rate two percent above whatever we are borrowing it at the time. Option three is to do nothing and the entire amount would go on their taxes, again, spread out over fifteen years with interest. It would first show up on their taxes in twenty twenty-six. And another caveat to this is that once the owner developer sells that lot to another party, whether it be a future homeowner or a builder, one hundred percent of that assessment would need to be paid off at that time. So, as the lots start to turn over, we will be recouping our money. We hope that, and the developer hopes, that this development continues quickly like many of his, his others have in this area and we could have our money paid back somewhere in that five-year range. But ultimately, if lots start to sit for a little bit, they would still just be making payments on that each year on their taxes until a time where fifteen years was to expire and then the full amount would be, would be paid up by that timeline. So, with that, I guess here is just a, a photo from, of the area and then here, council will recall, we recently went through and platted the area. Those plat approvals occurred at previous meetings along with the developers agreement and what I laid out for you tonight was all called out in the developers agreement with the extension of utilities and roadway construction. So, with that, I'll turn it over to council if any questions you might have.
Thank you, Stephen. Council, any questions? Comments? Do appreciate the creativity on this one with kind of getting ahead of the development and, and kind of one of those takes money to make money situations, so I appreciate how this is going to turn out and I think it's going to be positive. With that, anybody here from the public wishing to speak on this item? Yeah, hearing done, looking for resolution for item number eight.
So moved. Second.
Tom. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution setting public hearings for April seventh, twenty twenty-five for street improvement project assessments. Need a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number ten is a resolution approving a request for city hall flooring. Tom?
So, as part of the asbestos removal, we had the asbestos removed in the old engineering area. Included with that, they had to rip out the carpet, of course, to get to it. So, we requested local flooring companies give us a bid to re-carpet the entire area. We actually got two bids this time from local flooring companies. Huffman Flooring came in at fifteen thousand, three thirty-three and Slowinski Flooring came in at ten thousand, nine fifty. As you may recall, Huffman got the bid for the lower level, but the low bid is now Slowinski for the upper level up in the old engineering area and we request council approval to do this project from the building fund.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Looking for a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. On to item number eleven is a resolution approving a gambling premises permit for Austin Youth Hockey Association. Need a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number twelve is a resolution approving the agreement for design services with WHKS for sanitary sewer lining projects. Stephen?
You may recall at a previous work session, Brian Kaming with WHKS was here to present our findings from our six or seven-year I and I study where we were inspecting all of our sanitary sewer lines, our manholes and all of our sanitary sewer infrastructure. And from that now, we've identified criteria or areas to make improvements and in our twenty twenty-five CIP, we identified a project in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do sanitary sewer lining. With this project, we identified the Wildwood Park neighborhood and Sterling neighborhoods. In though, the unique part about those two areas is the sanitary sewer lines run down the back lot lines, they don't run out in the street. So, any trees in your backyards, you can imagine the roots and everything that could be impacting our sanitary sewer. Those are the two areas we have identified. We will, before you tonight is a proposal from WHKS in the amount of forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars to develop this project for CIPP lining, which is a cured-in-place pipe inside the existing sanitary sewer pipe, essentially a pipe within a pipe. And you can see there the different work that they will be conducting on the project to develop these plans and specifications. Through that process, we'll go back and we'll review what, what we found through that six-year plan and study and make sure that Wildwood and Sterling are the proper neighborhoods to get started on this year and brief conversations with them, we think it still is, but we'll develop that project, making sure that we're using that project budget to, to hit the, the most necessary areas for sanitary sewer lining here in twenty twenty-five. But with that, I would recommend approval of a contract with WHKS in that amount to develop plans and specifications.
Very good. Thank you. Council, any questions? Mr. Lang, item number twelve?
Stephen, does the forty-eight thousand come out of the seven hundred and fifty or is it on top of?
It will, it will come out of our sanitary sewer fund either way. That seven hundred and seventy-five thousand comes from our, our sanitary sewer fund. It, we, we could do it either way. I would guess it will come out of the seven hundred and seventy-five, so our actual project cost will be around seven twenty-five.
And are they going to set up a roadmap for the next however many years with that at, that fee or is this going to be kind of an ongoing fee that we can expect as we continue with this?
We, with our current sewer rates, we have, you know, we're going to generate about seven and a half million dollars a year with our current sewer rates. A portion, about a million of that goes toward the sewer collection team, their operating budget. About two million of that is going to go to the wastewater treatment plant operations. I'm going to get my, no, about, I think it's more like three million of that goes to our new operations at the treatment plant. A million is going to go toward street reconstruction projects like we just talked about with Oakland and all of the sanitary sewer work on there and a million dollars is going to go toward other projects. This falls under the other projects. So, we have about a million dollars per year planned for these types of lining projects. Maybe it's trunk main sanitary sewer replacement. So, it's, it's costs that are already in our rates that are out there that we're all paying for sanitary sewer fees. So, this isn't a new charge, it's incorporated into our yearly revenue.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, you know, we've talked a little bit about staffing in some of your departments and so when I see fifty thousand dollars a, if that's going to be an ongoing thing, that's like a third of an FTE probably. Is this something that you think that expense is going to be annual or are they going to set up the whole plan that we're going to execute with that fee?
No, this, this fee is just for this work planned in twenty twenty-five and it's likely every one or two years, we will do lining projects like this and need design help if we don't have the staff and manpower to do it in-house.
That's helpful to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Item number twelve, always looking for a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is a fifty-dollar donation from Mr. Gary Hart for the twenty twenty-five flower program. Look at a resolution to accept that donation, we appreciate his gift.
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number fourteen is granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract removal of junk and/or legally stored vehicles at the following locations. Location is fourteen A, twenty-one oh, one, Fifth Ave Northeast, the Lawhead property. Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to citizens addressing the council, are any citizens in the audience wishing to address the council on items that weren't on the agenda? All right, thank you for coming. Honorary council, we have none right now, so moving on to reports and recommendations. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. Members on the desk, I've noticed an article in the Star Tribune from Chip Scogans that had done a previous article on Austin, so I thought I'd bring it to your attention. Otherwise, Julie Kleinfeldter has an item.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make people aware that next Saturday on March fifteenth at the library from ten AM to two PM, we will be having a Comic-Con. If you've got kiddos in your life or if you like comics, that's going to be the place to be on March fifteenth. From ten to eleven, we'll have, you'll get to meet the five oh one Wolfpack Star Wars characters. Walking into the library and running into Darth Vader is kind of cool on a Saturday, so come and check those out. And then at eleven o'clock, the author Drew Brockington will be there giving an author talk and he's the author and illustrator of Cat Astronauts, which is a kids' comic. So, there's going to be lots of things going on, we'll have local businesses in-house, free comics, movies, free crafts, and prizes, so come check it out.
Excellent. Thank you, Julie. Onto city council comments or reports. Becky, let's start with you.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Jason.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Posty.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jeff.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. Laura.
We're on such a roll. Yeah, sorry. Thanks, Laura. So, on behalf of the Parks Recreation and Forestry Board, I want to congratulate Randy Hoffner on his retirement. We wish him well. He served the city of Austin really in incredible ways and, and did it with a smile on his face, so wishing him all the best. Also, thank you to Lynn Thompson who stepped up in the interim position and covered really with no warning at all and kept the, the parks and recreation and forestry system running. We really appreciate that.
I also want to say thank you to the city, Maurer County and Impact Austin for the work they've done on the comp plan to date. It's a huge massive project and there's really been a ton of community engagement. And I'm very encouraged to see all the people weighing in, sharing their ideas and and the passion for improving our community. It's very exciting to see and we have a great future. And then finally, I will announce again, mark your calendar, June fourth is Fourth Avenue Fest. There will be open swim, there will be live music, there will be arts activities. It will be sunny and seventy, just a light breeze. So I put the order in on the weather.
Guaranteed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Paul.
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, the only thing I have is it was really heartening to see the the amount of folks that showed up for the employee engagement from the health and wellness community, put that, or committee, put the soup and tater, or I'm sorry, soup and hot dish extravaganza last Tuesday. And I I don't want to gloat, but I was the second second place winner and Mr. Clark got a participation ribbon for his baked ziti. But when you bring a tater hot dish anywhere in Minnesota, it's going to be an award winner. So I'm proud to be second place. I thought it was an amazing turnout. And certainly great food. And I did my best of eating most of it, so. With that, I guess, Mr. Simonsen, you looking to speak to somebody or all of us?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I have some pictures I'd like to show the city council and the public.
It's been a while, Matt. It's been a few years since you've been here.
Yes.
Welcome back.
I would like to talk about the city ash tree, ash tree removal project going on. This is a picture of ash trees on my front boulevard. Last summer, I asked the city if they would treat it to make sure it stays healthy. And instead, the city apparently marked it for being taken down. But on on my street, Seventh Avenue Southeast, apparently every ash tree on the whole, on all the boulevards were marked for removal. And I didn't realize that because most of them weren't healthy. Anyway, here's another picture I'd like to show. Could I have this picture shown to you?
Just put it right on top of the other one there.
Right on top. And then three pictures.
Matt, can I give your, can you give your address, please, for the record?
Six oh seven Seventh Avenue Southeast.
Thank you.
And like here, this picture was taken today. There's a few, the tree removers, the Dodge Center apparently removed all the trees on the whole, on my whole avenue. And then they get into mine and I was telling them, well, these are healthy trees right down the block. And there's nothing wrong with them. They were all leafed out real well. And I was protesting that they would take these, especially these two big old trees down. And here's another picture I have. It shows a narrow ash borer tree that's been diseased. It's always splits in the bark and such. That's supposed to be just one example. Otherwise, last summer, when I pedal around Austin on bicycle all over, I'd seen many dozens of ash trees that were dead or dying. And I knew I told Park and Rec about it, that I imagined there's some hundreds in the city that are dead and dying, but by far, most of them are still healthy. And apparently, then I was told by one of the city people, oh, there's not hundreds in the city that are dead and dying, there's thousands. So evidently, they were earmarking all the ash trees to be taken down indiscriminately. And then the logs apparently are being sent to a sawmill locations south of town. And I asked the Dodge Center tree cutters, what sawmill is this? You have an address for it? Oh, they didn't. They had no address. They said, oh, we know where to take them. But anyway, I would like those large trees saved because they were healthy. And anyway, to stop them, otherwise the tree trimmers were at them today. So I told them all, I'm going to mention to the city council about this. But anyway, apparently, I was talking with Jason of Park and Rec and he seems to support this this tree program, taking all the ash trees down. And anyway, I protested it. And then what's going on here? The logs are all going out to a sawmill. Well, ash lumber can be valuable, of course, but but anyway, my neighbor has, there's a big tree on my neighbor's property line just east of me. And for fifty years, I've been watching that tree get fat, that ash tree get fatter and fatter. And anyway, five years ago, for some reason, most of all the leaves turned, crinkled up and fell off. And gee, what's going on here? But anyway, since then, the tree looked healthy again with healthy leaves the last sub many summers and whatever. Does the city council have a a plan to take down all the ash trees indiscriminately?
I appreciate your comments, Matt. I think you know, we we understand that you're opposed to taking down the trees.
I hear you.
I appreciate what you've done. You can pull up a chair and I'm going to turn it over to Jason Seahan to give us kind of the way the city takes to treating or removing our ash trees. So please have a seat, Matt, and we'll we'll address your comments. Matt, you can please sit. We've we've heard, so thank you. Now Jason will help you understand.
I guess I've said basically what I wanted to say.
We get the point. Thank you. Jason, why don't you run us through a little bit of how these city Austin assess the damaged trees and take down or save?
Sure, I can kind of give you some background and then be happy to answer any further questions council might have. So prior to setting out to inventory and identify trees for removal, the city kind of adopted a treat first campaign. So our goal was to go through all ash trees on city maintained properties and identify those trees that we determined through our certified tree inspectors to be treatable. So the difficult, the difficulty with that was we identified many trees this time of year, last year. So it's it's somewhat difficult to identify the real level of how infested an ash tree is before leaf out, which is like this time of year. You have to base it on the blonding, which is the the bark that's been picked away from the woodpeckers. You have to, you know, determine by small holes from woodpeckers that maybe they've been in there looking for the Emerald Ash Bore, but it's not there. So they've moved on. To give you an example, we have looked at maybe half a dozen trees recently that we've put on hold for the next round of removals that we think might stand a chance for treatment. We're still treat first. So we're going to give till leaf out this spring to identify whether they're treatable or not. They're likely not going to be, but we want to give every tree a chance. So so we're going to wait till leaf out to make sure they get on the next round for tree removal or for our in-house city tree crew to remove those trees. I'll also say, you you had mentioned, and we talked on the phone the other day, it was me that you talked to. You had asked about the tree removals going south of town. So we put a lot of effort and a lot of thought into the removal process when we contract out. The the fact is there's too many trees, there was too many trees in, within the city of Austin on city properties to remove in a short period of time, because when they become infested, they become a hazard very quickly. They deteriorate very fast. So that was much more than we can do with our in-house crew, which is why we went to city council. We also went to the Hormel Foundation, who was very generous in providing some grant funding to allow us to contract out the removal of trees. So they don't become a hazard and fall on houses and cars and trails and playgrounds. So when we contracted out, we thought quite a lot about what are we going to have these contractors do with the trees? The city decided we did not want to get in the business of, you know, having a staging area for for tree stumps, for tree branches, for tree chips. I'm not a fan of moving things twice. So we decided on the bid specifications to to specify that any contractor bidding for the removal of trees on city properties is responsible for the complete removal of the ash trees, the chips, however they wanted to do it, within the scope of the quarantine that that's that's mandated by the state. So, you know, they can't move it outside of the quarantine area. But that took the city out of the business of providing property for them to 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 put trees, chips, only to have to be dealt with a second time. So we, this first round of bids, we received fifteen bids, all of which those companies understood that the trees must be removed. The the branches, the tree stumps, the chips have to be removed offsite. The stumps are to be grinded and black dirt to be backfilled and compacted. That's all part of the bid process. So I don't know if I answered every one of your questions, but Mr. Mayor, if you have any other follow up or?
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate it. Before we do adjourn, I also want to comment that we do have nine, nine March anniversaries of employees. Want to read those? Chad Hurd has been twenty four years with wastewater treatment plant. Ernie Hammero, eleven years wastewater. Jim Hatton, Streets Department, nine years. Tim Donovan, Building Department, nine years. Alex Kaiser, nine years with Engineering. Ted Sherwood, Police Department, three years. Paul Kurtz, Streets, three years. Eric Christians, Library, two years. And Anna Lathrup, Library, two years. So thank you for those nine employees that have anniversaries in March. Appreciate their service. With that, looking for a motion to adjourn to March seventeenth, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. About a five minute break till the event session. Thank you.